Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. I ask you remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Last Wednesday, our country and the world stopped to remember the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. While we pause to remember his life, more importantly, we recognize Dr. King's great work through his all-too-short 39 years. We also pause to recognize the advances this country has made in the past 50 years and the work that still needs to be done in 2018 and beyond. So let us now pause to remember the work and life of Dr. King. And also, let us give a moment of silence for Henry Brown, the father of construction officer Russ Brown, who passed away this past weekend. Moment of silence and remembrance for Dr. King. May I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 12th and March 26, 2018?
No, moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, one note, I'm going to abstain on the 12th.
You don't have to, though, but just for the record.
You know, I go to two meetings, and I get two different answers from two different lawyers.
Okay. It's always good to play it safe. Can I have a motion for the regular minutes of March 12, 2018?
No, moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of March 28, 2018?
No, moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Welcome. I think this is the third meeting in a row that I've said we're having a meeting not too long after a snowstorm, and hopefully, this is the last time I will say this for the rest of the year. And may you, if it happens again, you have permission to splash me with slush. But related to storms, I do want to read a letter from James Fecult, the president of JCPN L., sent to the Borough of Madison. "All of us at JCPN L. deeply appreciate the dedicated efforts of the Borough of Madison Electric Department crews who played a vital role in helping us restore service to more than a half a million customers after two nor'easters slammed into our service area earlier this month. Your crews serve as outstanding representatives of the Borough of Madison. We were fortunate to have them working side by side with our utility workers to support one of the largest service restoration efforts in our company's history. Times like these remind us of the mutual assistance agreements' work, and our first energy companies stand ready to provide the same determined response should the Borough of Madison be faced with similar conditions in the future. Please extend my sincere gratitude for a job well done to every employee who helped us with extraordinary effort." So please, as you go out, thank our electric department for the help. Later this week, BPU will be having a hearing in Parsippany. I will be planning to attend that hearing, one, to have them understand that JCPN L. helped us, or thanked us for their help, for our help, rather, but also to make sure that there's something put in place that we can provide this mutual aid without having to go through hoops that we had to do this last time. So again, great to get that letter. Two other quick business things. I want to welcome Michael Plessier, our new communication technology expert. I think this is your first official meeting in the council since you started your job. So welcome aboard, and we'll be seeing a lot of you at all sorts of meetings. And just a point of order, I have a little issue with, I think, a sciatica issue, so if I stand up suddenly, it's not that I'm making a point, it's just that I need to stand up. A couple of things that happened over the past week. I traveled on March 28th, I traveled down to Edison, to the New Jersey Junior Achievement Headquarters, to swear in the Torrey J. Sabatini, mayor of JA BizTown. This is an amazing program for 5th graders where they get hands-on experience with running businesses in a model town. They serve as CEOs, CFOs, and other key business roles, and so there was obviously the mayor, and they all made speeches, and it's just incredible program. So it was an honor to swear in our Central Avenue School mayor. The prior week, Kings Road School was down there, and later this month, I'll be going back down to swear in the JA BizTown mayor for Central Avenue School. And then also, on Wednesday, I know several of us in the room were able to go to Drew University and join 3,000 other people to hear former President Joe Biden, Vice President Joe Biden, speak. He inspired and challenged us all to work together for a better country and world, and it was a great reminder of this asset we have in Drew as part of our community. And just thinking of the, you know, three people I've heard in the last couple of years at Drew, Secretary of State Condoleezza Rice, obviously, former Vice President Joe Biden, even President Bill Clinton. And then, keep in mind that on February 9, 1964, at Drew University, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was in Madison. And that's truly an honor for Madison to have that, and let us remember Drew's influence. If you have a chance, go to the Madison PBA Facebook page and do a search on Dr. King, and you'll see a picture of Dr. King being escorted by Sergeant William Higgins, who many of us knew who grew up in Madison. And the employee of the month for April is Fred Rivera, of the Department of Public Works. For his response upon, he found a resident in need of medical assistance after falling down her front steps. He promptly notified Madison Police, and Fred then stayed with the resident until help arrived. So if you see Fred out there working, thank him for his effort and stepping above and beyond the normal call of duty. And also, as a reminder, a rare opportunity, often you have to travel to Morristown to see your county freeholders at work, but you can travel here this Wednesday at 7:00. The freeholders will be holding their regular meeting here in Madison, so please come and join our county freeholders. And now I'm going to come down below to present a proclamation. Representatives of the Thursday Morning Club, please come forward.
Go, Anne. Get me the... I'm not stressed. Get in there. I'm good. Take it from the quickness. That's all, Anne.
Listen, too. Listen.
It's an honor to be here to present this proclamation. Earlier, it was said, you know, do we get tired of doing this? And I would never get tired of recognizing the great work of the Thursday Morning Club, but more importantly, something that is important as child abuse prevention, that our children are our most valuable asset. But we also know that to stop this cycle of the abused become the abusers, we have to raise awareness, and that's why your work is so vital. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with a social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with, stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of the partnerships created among citizens, human service organizations, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas the Thursday Morning Club will be planting pinwheels of prevention around town to educate the community about ensuring the great childhoods. Now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge our citizens to become involved in efforts to support the families and strengthen communities. Thank you for your work. We'll get a little picture, and then I'll hand the microphone off, so you can...
Yeah, keep it down. On behalf of the Thursday Morning Club, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for proclaiming April Child Prevention Month, Prevent Child Abuse Month. On behalf of the New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs, this has been their state project for the past two years, and it's been our focus and pleasure to support those programs over the past two years. This is an organization that was founded in 1979 and is totally dedicated to the prevention of child abuse and neglect in all its forms for every child in the state of New Jersey. And they do this through public awareness campaigns, parent and professional education, home visitation, and special projects for some very vulnerable homes. They truly do assist parents to provide a nurturing and safe environment for their children, and I couldn't say it any better than what was worded in the proclamation. So again, on behalf of the Thursday Morning Club, thank you very much for helping us to raise awareness in our community and the awareness of this very worthwhile organization. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a slight shift from our normal agenda, because we have our second agenda discussion is land development amendments. Our planner is here. We want to get her back on the road to New York, so we'll start off with that, and then we'll get back to the normal agenda with reports from committees. Ostry, do you want to start off with?
Well, yeah, okay. The Subcommittee of the Planning Board and with our planner worked on these recommended changes to residential zoning, and they're before you tonight for discussion, and hopefully you're okay with it. Then we'll send it back to the Planning Board, that they can determine it's consistent with the master plan, and then it'll come back and be introduced as ordinance changes. But Susan's here to give the explanation.
I know I feel guilty, because I'm actually staying in Morris County tonight. I'm feeling really bad.
That's quite all right.
In any case, there is a single sheet that was at your spots when you arrived, and it's because the second page of what was in your packets was not quite the correct version, but I'm going to walk you through it in any case. The first page, this is a two-page proposed ordinance for consideration. The only change on the first page is a minor modification to the existing definition of grade. Grade is defined as a reference plane with a lot of detail on your ordinance. It's the mechanism through which height is ultimately calculated on any development property or lot. The clarification is that the very last sentence of this definition actually includes a procedure. It's not something that's part of the definition, and so the suggestion is to eliminate that component of the definition. So the definition's, in essence, staying unchanged. It's just that in addition to the definition, there's a procedural element embedded here. So that is the first page of what's before you, the very first section of amendments under definitions for grade. The rest of that page, there are no changes. I'm just showing you the code as it exists, okay? If you get to the second page, this is where you have a new sheet that goes right in. The changes, and really the substance of the work of the Planning Board, is in supplemental design regulations, and it's a D that's added to the residential zoning districts. And there are really three primary issues that are being dealt with here. The first has to do with homes that are sighted in such a way that they read as if they are three-and-a-half-story homes, because you see, in essence, because of the grade of a property, you might see a fully exposed basement level, and then two-and-a-half stories on top of it. And if you think of different circumstances in the community, most of you can come up for an image where you, a home, can read as three-and-a-half stories. What D1 does here is to create a maximum exposed facade height limitation. So what that means is that you could no longer have, you wouldn't have an unlimited amount of exposure, that on a facade like that, where because of grades, either existing or proposed, you have a basement level that is predominantly above ground on one side of a home, there is still a cap on the amount of exposed facade that is visible from that side of the home. If somebody wanted relief from that, if they wanted to have more exposure, they would then make an argument about the fact that because of the way the home is sighted, and because of topography, and because of surrounding homes, that it's not visible, it's not a detriment to anyone. But there have been circumstances where homes that read larger than the two-and-a-half story, that your code allows as a maximum, that the perception is that they're larger homes than that. And that has to do with the fact that we average height, okay? So height gets averaged based on the grade as it moves around a structure, okay? So this does put in a standard that has a maximum exposed facade distance that is objective, that everybody can measure, and that we can flag those homes that have larger exposures for further review. The second element here has to do with, really, the massing of homes. One of the things that's happened in the last, I would say, 10 years is that it's much more common to get subdivisions and new homes that are proposed and built out completely to the maximum allowable building envelope. So we're getting often boxy homes that are built out to the absolute maximum footprint that's allowed. What this does, and this would not obviously apply to existing homes that predate what's before you, but what this does in the R1 and R2 districts, which are your larger lot, single-family residential districts, is that it requires that second stories be tucked in, so anything above 18 feet, be tucked in at an additional combined five feet. You could have three feet on one side, two feet on the other. If it were an addition that were proposed, it would be measured just from the one side, unless the addition was the entire expanse of a home side to side. And again, this is a challenge, because we get very boxy homes now. Obviously, historically wasn't the case. If you look at your older neighborhoods, there's a lot of variation in the way that older homes move in and out as they go from one story to two to two-and-a-half stories. So this is really in a response to some of the changes that we've seen in the way that builders have proposed homes in recent years. The third section deals exclusively with attached garages, and I want to make clear that detached garages are permitted. They continue to be permitted, and there's no changes to how they would be regulated. But I want to go through these one by one, because I think otherwise, it's a little bit, it's easy to get confused as to what these components mean. The first is that in the R1 and R2 districts, again, these are your larger lot, single-family home districts, what's proposed is that attached garages be allowed to face the side or the rear of a property, that the front-loaded attached garages would not be permitted without a variance, okay? In the R3 and R4 districts, this is the next item under 3B, this deals with the R3 and R4 districts, which are smaller properties, more narrow properties. This does allow a front-loaded garage on those properties, but there would be a cap on the width of that front-loaded garage. 3C addresses the maximum number of attached garage spaces in the different districts. Again, you could still have detached garages in addition to an attached garage on any larger properties that could accommodate it, but there are some caps, so three attached garage spaces in the R1 or R2, and no more than two in smaller residential districts. And the last item, which is 3D, addresses the setbacks. One of the things that we've also noticed at the Planning Board over the last, I would say, six or seven years, is that the garages have become more prominent parts of the design of homes, that if you front-load the garage and pull it forward, it appears easier to kind of maximize the floor area of a new home, and easier in terms of methods of construction. However, the feeling, based on discussion with the Subcommittee in the Planning Board, is that that's often at odds with the established residential character, and that the garages ideally should not be the predominant visual character or element of a home, of a new home. So what this would require is that the garages just be pushed back a few feet, okay? So not everything, so the garage isn't sitting forward of the front of the house, it's actually sitting a few feet, just tucked back.
So I can understand why you would want to stick it in front of the house, or allow it to be in front, but why not flush?
The idea is to require some variation in the horizontal plane of the home. So again, what we're getting are just boxes. Everything's flush, everything's built out to the maximum, the side yards, and we're not getting any horizontal plane variation in the homes. We're having to work very hard to ask builders to provide that, but there's nothing in your code that requires it. So you can have your entire front facade be completely flush, the garage very prominent part of that front facade. So the idea is to create some movement in that front plane of the home.
But why not allow the builder to do it in another way, other than having to push the garage back? Why not give them a couple of choices, as opposed to the garage just has to be pushed back?
If we're going to do something by zoning, it needs to be very clear and very objective, and so...
It can't be, do this or this?
That would be unusual.
But that is part of the variance application process of coming to a board to say, because the nature of our property...
And I will say that there might be unusual circumstances having to do with the grade of a property or the shape of a property that would rightly trigger a hardship variance, and someone could come and make that argument, and then they could mitigate the impact of asking for the variance with something like a porch or some other design components. I'm not saying that there aren't other solutions that work, it's just in terms of setting a baseline for zoning, it needs to be consistently applied throughout a district.
I mean, I just happen to live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of inclusive garages. There are some where they are prominent, and I can understand why you wouldn't want to do that, but most of them, a lot of the balance are flush with the front of the house, especially one-car garages, and to me, they don't really stand out in any way, shape, or form, and to try to push them back would severely limit the use of the property.
Well, and that would be true for existing homes that were constructed that way, but this is really only going to apply to new construction.
So if I have an existing house, and I want to do some significant work, I don't need to get a variance for this?
If your existing garage already is where it is, and you're not changing where it is, there's no, there's no variance. And I acknowledge that in different neighborhoods, there are absolutely situations like that. The very last component under supplemental standards has to do with variations in design. This would apply to subdivisions, okay? This is a classic, I would call it a non-cookie cutter provision, so that we don't get look-alike homes side by side. This is something that we work very hard at the Planning Board to negotiate with applicants on subdivisions. It's often helpful to have it be explicit, so that it's less of a negotiation, and it's understood that as they're coming in to do a subdivision and to look at, thinking about how they would lay out a couple of homes, that there is a clear guidance as to the expectation that the homes not be cookie cutter. And so that is what that language under D4 accomplishes.
One second question. You said that's for a development where there's multiple units?
Subdivision. Yes.
A subdivision?
Yep.
Susan, I have a question. Would they still be able to come in, if they want to build cookie cutter houses in a subdivision?
Yep.
Would this be a variance?
Yes.
Even though this is the zoning? I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but, I mean, they could still come in and ask for a variance?
Absolutely. So here's what I would, and I'm glad you're both asking questions, because it's helpful. I think that four should probably make clear that this applies in instances where there's more than one home proposed.
Because it doesn't say that.
So that's why I said I'm glad that you're asking questions. So it could say for subdivisions, where more than one home is proposed. But yes, someone would need to make an argument that they're extenuating conditions on that tract of property that's being subdivided, or there are other benefits to the proposed arrangement, and that it still meets kind of the design intent, so they would need to make that case.
And as you pointed out, this is fairly consistent with the way the Planning Board's been operating. As a Planning Board, here's a subdivision, there is some, a lot of conversation about, okay, you want this variance, but we're going to ask you to make sure the houses don't match up. So this just codifies what the practice has been, whatever possible.
And I agree, that should be clarified. It should read for subdivisions where more than one home is proposed, so that it's absolutely clear.
Ben, and then I think Maureen had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that it seems to me, in reading this, that you're addressing problems that residents have been talking about for years, so thank you very much. And I just hope it doesn't get watered down by exceptions to these rules, when individual developers appear before the appropriate committee to ask for changes. The other thing is, since you've taken these steps, I would assume you're open to consideration of additional steps that would add to this. Fine. I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense that this is not an end result.
It's always evolving.
A good process.
Yeah, and you know, my sense is, I went back and looked at the original 1992 master plan and your reexamination reports, and concerns about retaining residential character have been some of the strongest concerns in your planning from 1992 onward till today. And yet, we don't really have any tools in the residential districts to try to address those concerns. So this is a first attempt at trying to incorporate some of those standards, but it needs to be a living document.
Mm-hmm. Good. Thank you. Maureen?
So we have a lot of subdivisions in Madison that date back to the '40s and the '50s, and they tend to be smaller homes. We have a problem now with people coming in and buying that house, tearing it down, and building one of these McMansions. Now, I live in one of those subdivisions, and that's happened in three cases, and it's changed the whole complexion of the subdivision. So is there any way of adding to this that a developer or a contractor coming into an area where the houses match, that they have to take that into consideration? They can't just put a big old house in the middle of the subdivision?
Yeah, and I understand the concern. The regulation that... The, the regulation that could most directly address that specific concern, in addition to these, which would make sure that it's not conventionally built out to the maximum envelope, I mean, we're doing some, accomplishing some things here, would be a floor area ratio standard. And it's something that the planning board has discussed many times over the years, and we could have a very interesting conversation about the challenges associated with regulating floor area, the benefits, and I imagine that discussion is one that, that needs to continue to occur. I will say that particularly in communities with homes that were constructed at a lot of different periods, like Madison, it's often challenging to implement FAR so late in the game, floor area ratio so late in the game, because perception of size and mass and floor area and mathematics don't always go hand in hand. And so there's certain challenges in setting, where do you set the floor area? Do you set it at the smallest home in a district, somewhere in the middle? And then there is an issue of the resources to enforce it, because now you're requiring every applicant that comes to the zoning board who wants to do an addition as well as any new home, to do a detailed calculation of floor area. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. This is something that's worked well in, in many communities, but there are definitely challenges that, that would need to be explored and fleshed out, and that could be, you know, a longer discussion and something to consider in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Pat?
So one final question. On number four, it describes a bunch of things that you would like to see. Is, does, do all of them have to be different? Does some of them have to be different? How do you decide when the person's met this standard if they're putting in, let's say, three units in a new development?
So it does say shall, so the expectation is that each, each of the homes would not have the exact same roof line.
Mm-hmm.
Right? That doesn't mean that part of the roof line, you know, wouldn't be the same, but that overall, that the roof lines would, would have some variation.
Mm-hmm.
Heights of eaves and peaks of roofs vary, would vary. The building materials would be placement of materials as well as types of materials, so that's something that is not challenging to, to vary. For instance, we have had proposals where someone will use a different base course. You know, they'll use a, a blue, a bluestone base course on one house, on another house, they'll have the siding go all the way down and encompass, they won't have a separate base course. So there vary, there are a number of ways that that can be varied. And then architectural treatment of building facade, that has to do with fenestration, you know, windows, whether or not there are other architectural details. I didn't want to get too detailed about that, because I feel like that's the one that's, you could write a lot about, and I think the intent there is to, is to have some direction that the architectural finishes not be exactly the same.
But you, but the builder would have to meet each one of these?
Yep.
And you're not going to have it in Madison, but if you were building 100 units, I'm assuming at some point you'd allow replication?
If you were getting a 100-unit subdivisions, I would not have proposed that.
Okay.
I, I don't think it would...
This is more for the two, three, five?
What, what we get are two-lot subdivisions. We occasionally get a three-lot subdivision. I can't, I think in the last eight years, there's only been one subdivision I can think of that was more than three lots.
Okay.
I think that if there were a large subdivision, that would probably be, you know, part of a rationale for some relief from this, because, you know, it wouldn't make sense to continue to vary things to the point of ridiculousness.
Mm.
I mean, I, I see the point.
The, the Kings Road Division subdivision is an example of, we didn't have this in place, but we certainly required that of a developer to make sure that the houses were not cookie cutter. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Susan, and so we have enough to take back to...
Yeah.
Planning to...
Yeah, and I'll...
Make that change.
Incorporate that suggested modification.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. All right, now we'll move back to reports from committees. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Health Department has approved the opening of Central and Main, a new restaurant on Central Avenue. Additionally, new owners have been approved for the operation of Five Guys Burgers and Fries. Next, the Health Department is continuing to review plans for other new retail food establishments in the borough and anticipate, anticipate that they will be approved in the near future. Next, the coming events planned by the Health Department include the following: community screenings. On Monday, May 7th, there's going to be a women's health screening. On Monday, June 11th, one for the men. And finally, on Thursday, June 7th and Thursday, June 14th, a comprehensive metabolic profile blood analysis. For any additional information and/or to register, please call the Health Department at 973-593-3079. Next, in conjunction with Massa, there's a planning, there's a plan meeting with the Madison Community Pool and Madison High School for the 2018 graduation gala. And finally, health inspectors are encouraging the public to be aware of upcoming tick and mosquito season. Tips include using repellents and being vigilant with inspecting clothing upon entering indoors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. According to New Jersey State Climatology Division of Rutgers University, there's been 11 snowfall events in the 2018 calendar year. My God.
And all of them in the last month.
With approximately 45 inches of snow. It's a lot. Street cleaning, cleanup work continues from these multiple snow events. I'll talk a little bit more about that from DPW, who is, they've been out there at 7:30 this morning, they were chopping up trees on my, on my street, so your patience and your cooperation is really appreciated. The 2018 Road Improvement Contract Award recommendations have been made based on the successful bid opening for Elmer Street, Plain Street, Greenwood Avenue, and the 2018 Road Reconstruction of Rosewood Drive, Crestwood Drive, Kensington, and Central Avenue Southwest. This will be, this will add to the contracts awarded in February for the Mill and Overlay Program that in Barnsdale, Winding Way, Kings Road, Keep Street, and the municipal parking lots are going to be done. Snowfall again delayed some of the construction work on Central Avenue last week, but Joe Med Construction continues work on that water main between Fairview and Borden Streets this week. A water main break occurred last week, placing a number of residents in a temporary low-pressure condition, which was resolved after hours of municipal forces. The Utility Study Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, March 27th, at 7 o'clock to review the overall utility operations and capital planning. DPW wants everybody to be reminded that, that they've been working very hard with the Madison Environmental Commission, okay? And they're hosting a swap and share on Saturday, the 28th of April. This event is for the adults to bring slightly-used household items to public works and leave with another treasure. So they're not taking any mattresses, microwaves, toasters, and such, but if you have any questions, you could call DPW. If you want to see it, this, it's on Rosenet. So one of the young ladies at DPW, one of the secretaries, has been helping the Environmental Committee working on this, so this is a nice little, something for them to be doing. So, you know, as, as you probably see and hear, there's a lot of, a lot of broken-down poor trees in this town. We've had lots of conversations, you know, at Shade Tree and whatever, but the mechanics, the parks, the roads, and the sewer department are all out there, and they're, they're picking up all of the trim and, and removing all of it, so they've been doing an absolutely great job. Of course, in the meantime, they were plowing snow and, and salting and whatever, and they continue with all of their other work, so, you know, they've been doing a great job. I also want to talk about this, Madison Green Vision Forum, which will be on Thursday, April 19th, at Drew University. This is, this is going to be kind of a cool thing. This discussion is going to be held by students, and we're probably all going to be there as well as town officials, and it's how to make Madison a more sustainable community. But there are kids that are going to give two-minute presentations from each one of the schools, so it's going to be kind of cool. And of course, opening remarks by the famous mayor, Robert Conley. He'll be there, so. One of the other things that Madison Environmental Commission is working with, was Suburban Shoe Store. This is kind of cool. I'm glad, I'm sorry that Thursday morning people left, because they would love this. This is a project that they came up with, and I guess it was Pastor Dunn, Dodd?
Dunn.
Dunn, okay. That is working in conjunction. But you bring your gently-used shoes, and kids' athletic cleats, dress shoes and whatever, okay, to Suburban, and Pastor Dunn has found places for people who actually do not have shoes and whatever, so these are some great things that Madison Environmental Commission has been working with, with other places in the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Tax Assessor, April 1st was the deadline for submitting a tax appeal, and it has passed. Madison has less than 21 county tax appeal cases and 23 state tax appeal cases, so this is a very small number compared to surrounding communities. From the Finance Department, the borough's semi-annual debt payment of $417,768 will be made on April 16th. From the Chief Financial Officer, the user-friendly budget and state budget document have been transmitted to Dranton. As per state statute, these documents are available for the public to review, and the easiest place to find them is by visiting the annual budget process page on Rosenet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, they'd like you to know that during the month of March, they responded to 98 calls for assistance. Those broke down as 10 general calls, 17 still alarms, which, thanks to Mr. Burnett, I now know means refers to minor incidences as opposed to general alarms, and 28 investigations and 44 medical calls. The department also had two extensive drills during the month of March. At the Police Department, they would like you to know that this week marks National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, what we call dispatchers. And the Madison Police Department and the Madison Borough Council, pardon me, would like to recognize the hard-working dispatchers that play a vital role between the community and the emergency first responders. These unsung heroes are there night and day to answer our community's call for help. I would like to publicly thank them, and perhaps we can put this into the minutes. The dispatchers are, are Senior Dispatcher John Rafter, Dispatcher Evan Webb, Dispatcher Ben Keenan, Dispatcher Joe Mittmeyer, Dispatcher Vincent Zavletsky, Perdiem Dispatcher John Zaragoza, Perdiem Dispatcher Joseph Montano, Perdiem Dispatcher Ted O'Donnell, and finally, Perdiem Dispatcher Dan Nun. Thank you, Mayor.
Community Affairs, Ms. Burton.
The Fourth Annual Drew FDU Madison Avenue Challenge will be held next Wednesday, April 18th, at 6:00 p.m. at Dodge Field. It's going to be a great time, a great baseball game, and we're hoping that the mayor's magic arm will be available to throw out the first pitch. Also coming up on the anniversary is the 20th, I can't believe it's the 20th, 20th anniversary of May Day. And how May Day has grown. I mean, it started out as Jim Burnett and a couple people, and now we have over a thousand volunteers. We have, we have groups that adopt specific spaces, like the Thursday Morning Club, to attend to, and, you know, I love May Day, except if it rains, because when it's over, you can walk through town and you can actually see Madison sparkle. They will also, if you need added incentive, they will also be having a celebration. I think they're going to have pizza and hot dogs from 11 to 1 after all the cleanup is done, so get your calendars out and put May Day in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just for the record, my magic arm, like a good trick, disappeared years ago. And Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I just wanted to...
Yesterday, yep.
Yeah, yesterday. Post-storms, the, the, both the, the Water and Electric Department, after the storms and all the hard work they did in that, both, both of them are focused on two things. One, helping with the storm work repair, and other post-storm cleanups. They're all working together with the DPW, everybody's involved in this. And second, getting back to normal department tasks, such as meter installations, repairs, water mains shutdowns, and darkouts, whatever that is. Markouts, that's what it is, the markouts, I can't read by own writing, but that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None received.
This is our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to, items are on our agenda, and also resolutions, I can read through them very quickly. So obviously, you can comment on the land development amendments that you just heard about, or you can comment on the SEAL Power Presentation. Program that's been in place was last year, and you'll hear an update on that. And we have the following resolutions that I will go through now, not only for comment, but also so you understand what is on the consent agenda at the end of the meeting. Resolution 119 is appropriating $270,000, or approving the contract of $270,000 for Elmer Street sewer improvements to Joe Med Contracting. That money was appropriated through Ordinance 47-2018. Resolution 120 is awarding the contract to Sevelian Sons for the amount of $760,000 to the 2018 road improvement program. So that's the Mill and Overlay Program. That money was adopted in, appropriated in Ordinance 1, 2018. Resolution 121 awarded a contract to Midwest Construction in the amount of $684,000 for the Greenwood Avenue reconstruction, and that also is appropriated in Ordinance 1. Resolution 122 awarded a contract to JTG Construction in the amount of $229,000 for Plain Street reconstruction. Also, that money was appropriated in Ordinance 1, 2018. And I just want to point out the importance, the subtle importance of Ordinance 1 appropriating the money, that a lot of towns are now just passing their ordinances and just beginning to get their bids out to the street. Madison did that as our first ordinance of the year, and so these bids were out, and we're ahead of the, of the curve by quite a bit, and so it helps us get our projects done in a timely manner, and also helps us get good bids. Moving on to Resolution 123, awarding a contract to Clark Caton Hints for Professional Services for Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza, and that is to fix a plaza out front there that has shifted over the years, and that's Ordinance 56, 2016, and Ordinance 14, 2018 appropriated the money for that. Ordinance, Resolution 124, approving the purchase of a pickup truck and accessories for the Public Works Department, and the amount is $33,000. The money was appropriated in Ordinance 47-2017. Resolution 125, approving a run for the Madison Area YMCA on May 16th, and that is to allow it to use public streets. Resolution 126, purchase of emergency service unit to, awarding a contract to SNF Incorporated. And this is not to exceed 49,000, basically not to exceed $50,000, I round off the top, and this was approved in Ordinance 7, 2018, and also can be filed... And this was approved in Ordinance 7, 2018, and also can be funded through the Police Special Duty Trust. Resolution 127, appointing Keith Loflin of Loflin Law Firm as interim legal counsel for the zoning board of adjustment. A regular attorney is out on medical leave. Resolution 128, approving temporary signs for Chamber Commerce and DDC Home Expo event. That event's going to happen on April 28th. And Resolution 129, a settlement agreement for utility billing error. We had someone with an incorrect reading on their water meter for many years, and this is not to exceed $16,800. Resolution 130 is to approve the purchase of two utility truck bodies and accessories, awarding it to Tony Sanchez, LTD of, and the amount is $26,618. Ordinance 9, 2018 appropriated the funds for that one. And Resolution 131, appointing David Ardeglar to the position of General Foreman, Electric Utility Department. As you know, we appointed Jim Matina as our superintendent, and that vacated the position of General Foreman, and David Ardeglar will be moving into that position. And so those are the resolutions you may comment on, or those two agenda discussions. If you want to comment on any of those, please step forward, state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop at four. Anyone wishing to comment on those, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move back to agenda discussions and our presentation from Seal Power.
Good evening. I understand we've all been here since 6:00. I'll try to make this very brief. On a personal note, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank you for your support of the Junior Achievement Association. As a young person, I was involved in that, and I stand before you today as a business owner and a testament to their efforts. And thank you for helping these children get to experience in leadership in business and what have you. So I appreciate that. Thank you. For a little over a year, we've been running the Borough of Madison $49 Home Energy Assessment Campaign. And this campaign is really designed to introduce homeowners in the area to a very little-known program called the New Jersey Home Performance with Energy Star Program. Our firm, Seal Power, is a participating provider of that program. What's called a Building Performance Institute accredited contractor. We are a New Jersey sustainable business ourselves, and we're also a partner with the New Jersey Clean Energy Program as a participating provider of this program. The Home Performance with Energy Star Program is a national program. It's sponsored by the U.S. Department of Energy and the U.S. Department of Environmental Protection as a joint initiative. This initiative differs from other programs in that it looks at not just the individual systems in a home, but a home in its entirety. So the program is designed to figure out how individual systems and deficiencies in each of those systems affect the house as a whole, and the comfort and the overall energy consumption that the house utilizes to keep it warm in the winter and to cool it in the summer. So as part of this, we go in and we look at a number of the different components of each of these houses. Locally, it's the, I heard earlier, the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, they administer this program here in New Jersey. And I'm very grateful to the Borough of Madison for adopting this type of a program, because so few people have heard of this program in the past, but this is one of the richest programs in the country. It's currently offering a combined total of up to $19,000 worth of incentives for homeowners to make improvements to their house. And it's really one of the best programs that's out there as it relates to energy efficiency. The way that the program breaks down is it's based upon, the incentives that a homeowner can realize are based upon the projected energy savings that the home can potentially obtain by undergoing a series of retrofits. As you can see from the slide, the cash-back incentives are either $2,000, $3,000, or $4,000 worth of cash back. The program also offers an additional financing component to help ease the amount of out-of-pocket expense that a homeowner may incur by installing retrofits like this. Those financing options are either $5,000, $10,000, or $15,000 worth of financing. The $5,000 and $10,000 are at zero interest, and the $15,000 is a low-interest loan at So the program that the Borough launched in conjunction with our firm is to incentivize homeowners to undergo something called a home energy assessment or a home energy audit, essentially to figure out how a home is losing or wasting energy. This is a very detailed process. It's very similar to going to the doctor and undergoing a physical. When the doctor draws blood, checks all your vital signs, really does a sort of a top-down analysis of your overall health. We're doing something similar to that, only our goal is to understand the overall efficiency of the dwelling that we're there to assess. So the first part is we send a technician out to the home. They spend about two and a half to three and a half hours in the house, collecting about eight pages' worth of data. Regrettably, they use some old software that doesn't have an electronic interface, so we have an engineer that's at our office that spends his days entering that data into some software that's provided to us by the Energy Star Program. And we take that data and compile a report for the homeowner that we have a consultant bring to them to present in a very easy-to-understand format exactly what issues are inherent to the home that they're living in, what improvements can be made to help affect the energy efficiency of that dwelling, what those improvements cost, and what incentives are available to the homeowner for implementing those improvements. So it's really, by the time we're done with these three steps, we've spent a lot of time with the homeowner here in town, and we've developed a very thorough understanding of exactly how it is that their house works and what improvements that they can undergo to improve the overall efficiency and usually the comfort of the house as well. So what can we use this money for? It's great that all these incentives are out there, but what specifically can homeowners utilize these funds for? One component of this is remediating any sort of health and safety issues that the homeowner may be experiencing. Madison has a much older housing stock, as we've heard a lot of this evening. That stock, back then, they used building materials and systems that we don't necessarily utilize today. Outdated wiring, asbestos, knob and tube, mold, there's a whole bunch of, a whole host of different issues that may be confronted by owners of older homes. This program can help remediate a number of those different issues. Insulation codes have risen dramatically over the past 40 or 50 years. In fact, if you look at a house built in the early 1900s, there's a strong possibility that there is no insulation in those homes. So this program can help finance the installation or upgrade of insulation and air sealing in these homes. It can also help upgrade the heating and the air conditioning systems in these houses. So we often see old outdated boilers, old outdated furnaces, you know, things that can now be replaced by much more efficient variations or versions of those different systems. And this program, the funds in this program are available to homeowners to upgrade those different systems as well. So for a lot of folks, unless you've moved in recent years, you haven't necessarily undergone a home inspection. So this is also an opportunity for folks to get a better understanding of the overall safety of the house. As part of this assessment process, we inspect all of the exposed gas lines for gas leaks. Our technicians have carbon monoxide detectors on them, so they're measuring the ambient carbon monoxide levels within the home. Every winter, unfortunately, we hear about issues with that and typically a number of deaths associated with carbon monoxide levels inside of a home. We're actually measuring each of the different mechanical systems and analyzing exactly how much carbon monoxide is being put off by each of these systems. So for the furnace, we literally drill a hole in the chimney, stick a probe in there, and measure how much carbon monoxide is in the exhaust of each of these different pieces of mechanical equipment. We're looking for a host of different potential issues, because the last thing that we want to do is come in and seal up and insulate a home and exacerbate a problem that was maybe naturally taking care of itself by having it so old and leaky to begin with. From there, we're looking at the efficiency of the house, so we're analyzing each of the different components of the home, the insulation levels, the building structure, the orientation, a number of different factors there. And then from there, we're also, we're performing a series of specialized diagnostic tests. In most cases, that includes infrared, that includes a device called a blower door, which we affixed to the front door, and that gives us, that actually helps us pinpoint exactly how leaky a house is relative to how leaky it should be. So from there, we take all that data, we've presented a report to the homeowner, and ideally the homeowner decides, you know what, this sounds great, we want to participate in this program. This is what a timeline for that customer would look like and how they would work through the different processes. To date in Madison, we've performed 179 total assessments. And we've been here for a little bit over a year. Our original goal was to perform 100. So we're way past that. We've surpassed that in flying colors. We've done 29 retrofit projects here, so that's a great number. We've done our own outreach as administrators of the program. It's sort of, our job is to incentivize folks to participate in this. So number one, the actual assessment that we perform is very much a loss leader for our firm. We're doing this assessment for $49, and very candidly, in the hopes that the folks will appreciate our skill and competency and hire us to do some of the retrofit work. We've put on our own event with the support of the Environmental Commission. Thank you. We've, in the fall last year, we did our Fall in Love with Sustainability event in the Museum of Trades and Crafts. We've participated in a number of different forums here in town. We've put together dedicated landing pages, customized brochures. We've sponsored a town-wide mailer that was written by the mayor. Thank you very much. And we've gone on to volunteer at a number of different events in town, both myself and my staff. The objective here is to build a sustainable community, and that's just not necessarily related to energy efficiency. We're sponsoring the May Day event this year. We're going to be an anniversary sponsor of that. And our goal is to be as immersed in the communities that we're operating in and be as supportive to those communities as we possibly can. But that's it in a nutshell. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us out. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you. We've been thrilled working here. The response that we've had is almost second to none. It's both from the community and the community leaders here in town as well. It's been a pleasure working in the Borough of Madison, and we've really enjoyed the time here. We're grateful to you for extending our time here from the 31st through the end of June, I believe it is. And we hope that we can look forward to a relationship here with everyone for years to come.
Comments?
I knew it.
Yes.
Yeah. About a year ago, when I'm liaison to Madison Environmental Commission, and we start talking about this, and I went home and I said to my husband, you know what? This house was built in 1934. Let's do it. It's $49. And your people came in, and they took about, probably about three and a half hours. I have a tiny house, but they took three and a half hours. I was kind of amazed because there was something wrong with the furnace that we did not realize that he found. We did not have any insulation anyplace in the attic. But what I wanted to say is that I appreciate like how professional everybody was. I mean, we decided to go ahead and retrofit, so we're one of those 29 people. And we had a lot of work done. So the people that were sent to our house were extremely professional, very nice. Natalie is out of this world. You know, she's like the best person to sit down and really talk about what should be done, maybe you could do it yourself or whatever. So I did a little spiel for the Madison Environmental Commission that kind of went all over the place, which I was surprised about, but I'm a Realtor. That's my real job. And I recommend this to people who live here because it's the best $49. And that's what I said in our little spiel, it was the best $49 that I ever spent. But I thank you for your professionalism and the people that you sent to the house. We had a good time with them. They were all very nice, and they did a job, and that was it.
Thank you. That's wonderful to hear.
And I can share my experience. My wife and I are proud owners of one of the 1900s' house, and the audit confirmed what we suspected. Actually, we suspected either we had no insulation on our walls or there were poltergeists in the house, which is a cause of the cold drafts all the time. But yeah, if we stand by the windows is the best place in our house because they're new, but everything else is wide open. So it was very helpful. We have not done a retrofit, but we now have a list of projects we can do. And just to reinforce what you stated before, you are doing this as a loss leader, but you may get the job or you may not get the job. A resident can take that report and go to anyone and say, what can you do this work for? So I think that's important for residents to know too, that if you're a company to look at, but they can look anywhere.
Yes, they certainly can. There's no obligation to move forward with any of the measures that we recommend or with our firm whatsoever. We equip the homeowner with all of the information that they need to either utilize our firm, utilize other firms that are in the area, or potentially even do the work themselves.
Yep. And the financing, the money back, that is a very important part of the program, so you help them with that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read this statement?
Ordnances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 26, 2018. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance for second reading. I ask the clerk to read ordinance by title. Ordinance 15-2018.
Calendar year 2018, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank per New Jersey statute annotated 48, colon, 4-45.14.
I open the hearing for ordinance 15. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 15-2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 15-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 16-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 15 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Downtown Development Commission.
I open the hearing for ordinance 16. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 16-2018.
I second it. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 16-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Now, ordinance 17-2018 will not move forward. I ask Oster Bailey a motion to withdraw.
Mayor, I move to withdraw ordinance 17-2018 and retire the number.
I'll second.
And we have a new ordinance being introduced today to correct what was an error in the first one. We wanted to add a position and not take care of one of the at-large positions, and so that will be introduced.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that has been withdrawn, and that number is retired. Call up ordinance 18-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $680,000 from the Water Utility Capital Improvement Fund for 2018 Water Utility Program Improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance 18-2018. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 18-2018.
I'll second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 18-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 19-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $260,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Program.
I open the hearing for ordinance 19-2018. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 19-2018.
I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 19-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof. notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 20-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $20,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for a Welcome Center at the James Library Building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 20-2018. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 20-2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion?
I'd like to say, I think it's important that we pass this ordinance and the one that comes after it, because the James Building belongs to Madison, and it anchors our downtown. And if we don't take care of it, which has happened, it might just fall down, or things will fall off of it. And, you know, we've been working on this for a long time. I think this takes care of it. So, I'm really proud of us today.
Ben?
Yes, I'd also like to add that the plan looks quite handsome, and although somewhat moderate, it fits very well in the building. It's a plan, you know, but at the end of the day, I think it'll be very nice.
Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 20-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 21-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $66,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for exterior renovations and restoration of the James Library Building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 21. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 21-2018.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 21-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 22-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to update the water connection fee schedule.
Open hearing for ordinance 22. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 22-2018.
I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 22-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 23-2018.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to update the sewer connection fee schedule.
I open the hearing for ordinance 23. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2018.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 23-2018 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And for the record, you have to read that statement after H1. That was a three-cup hearing there, three-cup of water hearing. Okay, we're on to the second invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic, but again, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to cut at four minutes. Come on up, Jesse. Okay. Okay, come up, Deb.
Deb Starker, 30 Beverly Road. All I really wanted to do is just thank the council today for their generosity and also for their foresight into really spending so much time and energy in supporting and recognizing the importance of James Library Building and the restoration projects that really are so needed to keep this magnificent building looking as beautiful as it does. And one of the things that's going to happen with some of this money today is there is actually going to be a cleaning of this building. You're not going to believe the color of this building when it's finished, so I really do appreciate all of your support. The other thing I just want to point out is that Morris County Visitor's Guide, I just got an advanced copy, and you'll notice that that's Madison on the front cover.
Ah.
So, I think that's kind of nice. And we just did a brand-new brochure, so we'll have some lovely photos, and maybe next time we do, we'll add the visitor center, but this is the museum's brand-new brochure, and I'll have a couple out there. But again, I just really wanted to thank you for your support.
And thank you for your stewardship, and please thank the trustees. Jesse? And I, it's great, it's nice to see you. I apologize that you're back here. I did have a tickler for this week to check on the update, but I'll allow you to ask your questions, and then we'll can report. I'm just guessing at your topic.
Okay. Number one, I just want to say, first of all, congratulate DPW, all the departments here in Madison. They have done a phenomenal job of cleanup, maintenance, and everything.
And Jesse, if you could, yep, state your name and address again.
Oh, Jesse Esposito, Community Place, Madison, New Jersey. I'm concerned of the frat house that is 20 Cook. I just learned not too long ago, but these college kids have not renewed their lease. They will be leaving as of June. I'm leery and weary that we're going to have a new group of fraternity brothers, and I don't think I could deal with that for another year. It's just been so tough living there with the vehicle traffic, with the noise, with the amount of in-and-out, door slamming, everything. It's just too exhausting, and I really hope we can do something about it. I don't know if Taylor is re-renting the place to college kids, but I have a feeling that it's happening, because I'm seeing all new different cars coming in now, people parking all over the place again. We haven't gotten our signs, but I'm not going to complain, because I've been doing a great job maintaining our street, but it is starting to get bad again, and I just want to address it again. I'm really concerned about the frat, and the yard's just disgusting, just so you know. So, thank you for hearing me. Again, congratulations to all the departments for such a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. We will pass your compliments on to all our crews. Obviously, as far as renting, we have limitations as to what we can do, but we certainly, as quality-of-life issues and health issues, we will respond as needed and as are reported. Do we have any update as far as the Community Place subdivision, and having that as become an official street?
We do. We've hired John Napolitano's partner, Sal Alfieri, to prepare the subdivision application. We have all of the survey work that we need. We're waiting to get a date from the zoning board of adjustment on that. And the other thing we're trying to do with the mayor's help and the Board of Education is to try to identify some additional parking in the area that would be available to the community. We've had a series of meetings with them, and the goal would be is to relieve some of the stress on Community Place and have some especially additional parking in the immediate vicinity, and that's the goal.
Yeah, once you step away, sorry, but that's an update of what we're doing, and hopefully you'll be sometime in the near future coming back to say, "Thank you," or "I noticed," even if you don't have to say, but we are working on it. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for April 23, 2018. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 24-2018 for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 25 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24-2018.
I'll second the motion.
Council discussion? I'll let you, Austria, you can explain the...
Right. The Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Committee has representatives from all the green teams in Madison, as well as the rec department, and the one that was missing was the Shade Tree Management Board, and we feel that it needs to be part of the process, that they can help contribute to discussions about the passive parks and here in Madison. They are working on an arboretum at the Summer Hill Park, and we're all trying to, we're stronger in numbers when we apply for grants, so this is why I'm recommending that we have a Shade Tree Management Board representative on the committee.
And one of the key things that this is different is we not only add the Shade Tree, but we expanded the committee by one member, so again, it keeps intact the number of what we call at-large.
Correct. You have to have the public involved also.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
All right, we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution R.119-2018 through R.131-2018.
I'll second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Just for the record, Resolution 125 will be, if approved by the council, will be defined by our council president, because that relates to the Madison Area YMCA. Hey, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
I abstain, R.125, yes to all the rest.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. The clerk, sorry, read the vouchers by...
Current fund, $297,332.20. The general capital fund, $5,050.14. Electric operating fund, $185,656.35. Electric capital fund, $4,000. The water operating fund, $2,169. The water capital fund, $285,009.50. And trusts, $17,361.28. A total of $769,578.47.
Mr. Mayor, I move the voucher list.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.